I'm testing the audio to make sure it's working this time. There's a few people on Zoom. If you can hear me, can you give me a thumbs up?
I did, thank you.
Raise, there we go. Hand raise first. Thanks Brianna.
We're now calling the April 3rd, we're meeting for Santa Fel City Schools. The first item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask M if you would
I know.
Thank you.
I asked you. Everyone, please stand and put
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, M.
Sorry, I just tried to keep you on your toes.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is announcement of reportable closed session action. We did take a reportable action, which was the introduction of the Glenwood Elementary School principal. In that action, we had a unanimous vote to approve Jacob Hodgson to be the next Glenwood Elementary School principal. So Amy, would you please tell us a little bit about Jake?
For your attention to the screen, there's Jacob Hodgson. Welcome Jake. You've just been approved by the board. So congratulations on your new position.
Thank you very much. And I apologize if there's a kid in the back making some noise. I just found out my son has an ear infection. So the luxuries of working from home and doing this, but thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm excited about this opportunity. I've gotten to meet several people in the community over the last three times I've been in interviews and checking out the campus. I feel honored to have been chosen. Hopefully I'll get to know each of you on a more personal level, but just so you know, I'm coming in with over, I think, 24 years of education experience and 13 of the last 13 years in administration in San Francisco and Daly City. So I'm really looking forward to bringing that experience to the table and working in Santa Fel City Schools.
Awesome. Well, as Jake mentioned, it was a multi-step rigorous interview process, including onsite visit to Glenwood. He recently moved to Nevada with his family. So this is certainly more convenient than driving to San Francisco. And Jake was chosen because he has a strong special ed background, social emotional experience with kids, and really an instructional leader at his site. So we're thrilled to have him join Santa Fel City Schools.
I appreciate that.
I'd like to see if any of our board members would like to say anything. Perhaps our trustee that has children at Glenwood.
Hi there Jake. Nice to meet you. I'm super excited. You'll see me usually at drop off, not pickup, but I'm excited to get to know you and welcome you to the community. And yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And as a little side note, I have, I worked with the middle school principal, Michael Statchen before too. I was at his feeder school. So we worked extremely closely together back in San Francisco as well. He was at Jefferson and I was at New Traditions at the time. And we had a really tight relationship, which I hope to continue with as we move forward.
I can't wait to see some of your dance moves for morning gathering that happens on Friday at, you know, Monday morning.
I wasn't informed of that, but I'm sure, I wasn't informed yet, but
Get you ready.
You got the memo from trustee Martine now.
Well Jake, welcome to Santa Fel City Schools. We're so happy to have you and good luck with the ear infection. I'm the mom of two young kids, so I feel your pain.
Yeah. And side note, once again, thank you for your time and patience here. I had spring break last week. The kids were sick the week before spring break, perfectly fine last week, and I had to pick them up early today. So that's the way it goes. I just have to start learning to deal with that stress since it's new. I'm a middle-aged man with a two-year-old and a four-year-old, so.
You're living, you're going to be living close to your workplace. That's awesome.
Yes, that is absolutely wonderful. But I am going to get back to him. Thank you so much. I am honored once again. And I really look forward to joining everybody in the summer when we start our work.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. All right.
Thank you very much.
Take care. All right. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes or I'll look for a motion?
The approval of the agenda.
Moved by trustee Jackson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice President Martel Dow. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Now it is my great honor and privilege to talk about the approval of the superintendent's employment contract. So I will say before, before we get started, I will read out the, basically a detailed version of what is included in the contract, which is required under the Brown Act. We also have copies available in the room if anyone would like to take a paper copy of it. And it will be linked in the meeting minutes so that anyone who wishes to see the full contract will have that available. But here I go. I will read the statement per the Brown Act prior to the board voting to approve the new superintendent's employment contract. It is recommended that the board approve an employment contract for Carmen Diaz Geisels to serve as district superintendent effective July 1st, 2023. She is being offered a three-year contract, which includes the following elements of compensation. One, Ms. Diaz Geisels will receive an annual base salary of $280,000 with an increase of at least 3% in 24, 25, and an increase of at least 3% in 2025, 2026. Two, a $1,500 master's degree stipend. Three, a $1,500 doctorate degree stipend. And I will mention that this is consistent with other certificated teachers within our district. Number four, health and welfare and retirement health benefits on the same terms as other administrators and managers. Five, $5,000 for a board-assigned mentor in 2023 and 2024. Six, a travel stipend of $300 per month. Seven, a mobile device stipend of $150 per month. And eight, a one-time payment of $1,500 for relocation expenses. And as I mentioned, copies, physical copies are available in the room and the full contract will be linked in the meeting minutes. Before I ask the board to take a vote, I'd like to see if there is any public comment within the room or online.
Those online using Zoom, if they wish to make a public comment, can use the raise hand feature at this time. Same then.
All right. With that, I will look for a motion. Trustee Palma.
I'd like to make a motion to, to welcome as our new superintendent Carmen Diaz.
And approve.
Approve the contract, yeah.
I'll second that motion. Okay, trustee, moved by trustee Palma to approve and appoint Carmen Diaz Geisels as our next superintendent, seconded by Vice President Martel Dow. Do we do a roll call or is it, okay, roll call vote. I will go in order. Trustee Jackson.
Aye.
Trustee Palma.
Aye.
Trustee Martine.
Aye.
Vice President Martel Dow.
Aye.
And I, President Daly, am an aye as well. It passes unanimously. We have a little gift for you. Thank you so much. There you go. Welcome Carmen. Stand over by the podium because I do want you to say a few things, but I think I'd like the board to say a few words first. Yeah. Why don't, why don't we start from the end? Trustee Jackson.
Thank you. It's so much easier going first.
I know.
But just welcome. We're just thrilled to have you with us. And one of the things I picked up from talking with, hearing you in the interviews was how you recognize where we're at and want to keep us moving forward with the projects that we've started to get them through. And, you know, then to take us to the next level. So really looking forward to working with you on that.
Carmen, bienvenida. I am so excited to start working with you. Not only that, I believe in making history. And according to my records, you're the first Hispanic superintendent in Haring County. Did you wrong? But that is correct, right? Who else do we have?
We had one.
In the district? Well, you're the first one for me. That's what matters.
So welcome.
Thank you very much. Carmen, thank you so much for joining us. And I'm just really excited that you're going to be a part of our community and that you have family here and you're going to have roots here. And I just still remember your interview and I think me and another colleague put a smiley face on our notes. So welcome. Thank you.
Hopefully that smiley face will continue.
Yeah. And like my colleagues have said, we're very excited to have you here. We definitely feel that we picked the best candidate that we had in front of us. And I am very grateful that you have accepted this offer to join our district. And I think you're also, not to say anything, but I think our district is also a very cool place. We have a great staff and thanks to the leadership of our current and soon former, we also have a very good district that has, you know, been, going to be welcoming you with open arms. And I, as a board, and I'm sure the staff, cabinet, labor partners, we're all really excited to welcome you.
And I just want to say, you know, first of all, we, I wanted to thank Blanca and Mark from Leadership Associates, who helped lead the search, but also a huge heavy lift from Christina and Amy in particular, Elsa Moreno and Teresa Allen to get this all together. We had 19 highly qualified applicants for this position. We moved and eight current superintendents were in that group and five people that were actually from out of state that were also, it was, it was a very impressive group of people. We narrowed it to six. We had a full day of interviews. And as part of that, we also had a community panel that represented a lot of the diverse community that we have within Santa Fel to be able to make sure that the voices of so many of our students, families, teachers, classified staff were represented in that room. So I just want to acknowledge that it was a very rigorous process to get us to this point. And we're just very happy. We ended up where we were supposed to, which is with Carmen, who has 38 years of experience and comes highly recommended. And we're just so thankful that your daughter Sarah and her husband Mark decided to settle in Santa Fel so that we could have you join us. But we're really excited for this time and look forward to hitting the ground running. And with that, I have asked our current superintendent to say a few words as well.
Well, welcome aboard. Leaving, it feels great to know that the district's going to be in your trustee hands. So that's really important to me is to make sure that we have somebody following who's going to keep our great stuff going. And I think you're that person. I think your background and experience are amazing and incredible. And I think that you have the experience and talent to take us forward. I've also heard from some, several other superintendents that I know that have worked with you that gave you a strong nod of endorsement. So that's always good to hear from your peers that you're well-respected. So I really couldn't think of a better person to take over after all these. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And all I can say is it's an honor and a privilege to be given this opportunity. I look forward to learning from these folks behind me because they are, they are the heart and soul of this district. And I want to be able to take what you have built, Jim, what the board has built, what they have built, and take it to the next level and to the next step. So I am so excited and so thrilled. And one day, my little grandson might be coming to this district. So I'm just really excited. So thank you very much for the honor and privilege. So thank you.
I'll also mention that Carmen's mother Maria is watching.
Yes, she is.
And I hear, I hear that she gives notes.
She does.
And Maria, you can also give me notes. So my mom also gives me notes, so I understand.
I love it.
Okay.
May I say something else?
Oh, please, please, please.
Yes, yes, yes. No, the one thing I was going to say is that I would like to recognize the two trustees who actually led the search and helped support all this process. Because as you know, you know, the board is a volunteer role. It takes a lot of work to do all this. And I want to acknowledge our president Gina Daly and my trustee colleague John Earl Martine, because they both did such a wonderful job, really coordinating with our consultants, coordinating with staff. And we learned a lot through the process. So did, so did I, and I think the other trustees as well. But I think we did the best that we could with, with, you know, with the timeline that we had. And I really want to recognize the work that they put into all of this. So thank you. And I'm so proud to be part of this board with you.
Thank you guys.
It's definitely a team effort. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to announcements. I'm going to start with Tess, if you'd like to go first, our student board trustee.
Thank you so much. All right. So first of all, I'd like to welcome you to our district. I'm very excited for all the work you will be doing and including you into our community. So see you around the school. Okay, first off, Friday's Career Technical Education Fair was a big success with a lot of great information and presentations and our students loved it. We are also excited for the renovations coming up this summer, which will equip TL with facilities for our CTE pathways. Students are continuing course selections. Teachers, specifically AP teachers, are visiting classrooms to talk about their classes and encouraging students to sign up. After COVID, AP teachers requested needing some additional time to prep students for exams in May. With increasing access to AP classes and many of our students taking those exams for the first time, our principal will be extending opportunities for all AP teachers who are interested in it to teach six additional hours on a timesheet with accommodations made for the best time, location, date, et cetera. This is optional and just an extra way to prep students, many of whom are English learners, special education, and avid students. We thank our teachers for welcoming all students into their AP classes and providing not only the material needed, but also the extra support for more rigorous classes. We are busy interviewing and hiring new staff for next year. We are excited to be welcoming two new physical education teachers, an ELD teacher and a math teacher. We are also in the process of filling spots, a spot in our Spanish department, and we'll be hiring another math teacher. We hope to fill all positions by the end of the month and will be welcoming new staff with activities and gatherings throughout the rest of the year. Finally, Marin County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services through Mental Health Services Act Prevention and Early Intervention is offering a free adult mental health, first aid training. During the eight-hour course, participants will be introduced to common mental health challenges and a five-step action plan to help people both in crisis and in non-crisis situations. We encourage everyone who is interested to register.
Thank you Tess. But I want to go to our labor unions next. I see Morgan Agnew in the room. And if Brianna and Tanya are online, please help them raise their hands. But Morgan, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Morgan Agnew, president of the Santa Fel Federation of Teachers. SRFT would like to extend our warmest welcome to Carmen Geisels. Thank you for coming to work with us here in Santa Fel. Over the last four years, we've worked hard to build a collaborative relationship between our high school certificated employees and the superintendent and staff at the district office as we work together to support our students through what we can only hope will be the greatest collective challenge they will see in their lifetimes. We don't always agree, but when we disagree, we do so with transparency and in good faith. As our district has dealt with the crises of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, school closures, a long overdue racial reckoning, school violence, deteriorating student and staff mental health, and the welcome challenge of spending large amounts of federal and state relief dollars on a short timeline, we've adopted the same approach I take in my garden. Plant everything we can get our hands on and see what grows. We've started so many new initiatives and programs in the last four years that I dare not try to name them all. Many of these initiatives have been highly effective at addressing student learning loss and supporting mental health. Others, less so. Much like my garden right now, it's time to stop planting and start weeding and pruning. What we ask of you as our new superintendent is to provide us with focus. Help us gather the data to determine which programs are working well, which could be working better with some minor adjustment, and which should be wound down, especially as the funding that supports them expires. Help us refocus our efforts on the handful of high-leverage programs that most effectively support our students and our staff. Superintendent Hogaboom got to do the fun job, saying yes to every good idea that anyone came up with. We're asking you to do the harder job of saying no, not yet, and hardest of all, not anymore. We can promise this. We're ready to work with you and make those hard choices together. Thank you again. Welcome to Santa Fel.
Thank you, Morgan. I see Tanya online.
Yes, and Brianna. Okay, great.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, school board trustees and superintendent Hogaboom. First off, to our incoming superintendent Carmen Geisels, bienvenida. I want to say CSCA Chapter 341 welcomes you to Santa Fel City Schools and we look forward to establishing a cohesive relationship. Second, in dealing with other districts, I will just leave it at that, where our classified have been undervalued and flat-out disrespected, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Santa Fel City Schools, Board of Trustees, and the district have always shown how much you value our classified. We may not always agree with each other and tough conversations have been had, but never during my time in various roles in leadership that I have had, have I felt disrespected or undervalued by our school district. So I'm genuinely saying thank you. I appreciate you guys. When, as regional reps, I get to deal with other districts and when I see the disrespect, the level of not recognizing what are classified, I always think back to our board, even previous boards. The respect we have at Santa Fel City Schools has always shown us. So I'm genuinely saying thank you to you guys. That's not a precursor to our negotiating teams coming up. Not trying to butter you guys up. But I felt it was important to say that tonight. With that being said, CSCA does look forward to starting the sunshine process with the district for our reopeners. I am currently working on setting up a meeting with our negotiating team to discuss possible reopeners. We expect to get you our sunshine proposal fairly quickly and look forward to begin negotiations with the district. And in closing, because I see her sitting there, I need to recognize Ms. Tess from Terlinda High School. Thoroughly impressed with, with her demeanor and how she handled all the interviews that we spent a whole Sunday doing. I, I just felt the need that I need to recognize this young student for the magnificent work she did. You left me very impressed that day. So with that, have a good evening. And again, bienvenida, Superintendent Geisels. And I look forward to meeting you again in person and working with you.
Thank you, Tanya. And let's have Brianna.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Hogaboom. I am Brianna Padilla, the president of the TK through eighth grade educators of Santa Fel Teachers Association. And as Morgan and Tanya mentioned, SRTA is also excited to welcome Ms. Diaz Geisels to the Santa Fel community and would like to echo their comments. We would also like to say that the SRTA educators are looking forward to collaborating with you. So Carmen, apologies that I'm not there in person. We look forward to collaborating with you and advocating for the highest quality educational experiences for our students and for purposeful and impactful professional development for our educators and working towards a more equitable Santa Fel community. So we're excited to start working with you. And welcome Jacob Hodgson to Santa Fel City Schools as well and to Glenwood. We're excited to, to have a leader there that, that will be there long-term. So thank you and welcome. And since last week's meeting, it was, it was really great to see so many of our students reclassifying as fluent English proficient at the ceremony at Santa Fel High on Thursday. And we're extremely proud of those 359 students that reclassified this year and are dedicated to supporting more of our multilingual learner students in achieving the same. Since our report last week, or in our report last week, I shared that SRTA membership has been engaging in organizing teams and activities and preparing to strike if that becomes necessary. And this past week, SRTA members voted to authorize SRTA leadership to call a strike if it becomes necessary after fact-finding. Eighty-three percent of our membership voted, and ninety-nine percent of the voters approved this strike authorization. And the bargaining team, they continue to prepare our fact-finding presentation. They've been working really hard on getting that together, and an identified neutral party and a date for presentations are still to be determined, so we're still waiting on that. And we continue to be committed to the fact-finding process and are very hopeful that we can come to an agreement through that process. SRTA, as a unit, remains invested in our students and the community as we work to get the best for our students and a fair contract for our educators. So, our SRTA report, we're, we're mostly excited to welcome two new leaders to our district and to continue supporting our students. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brianna. Okay, I'm gonna go in reverse order. So, Vice President Martel Dow, do you want to give your report first?
Yes, I don't have that much to report in terms of school business, except that we spent a little time last Sunday working on this, on the recruitment. So, but other than that, I think I don't have that much to report to the board, since we were here last week. Thank you.
I was gonna say, we were just here last week. And I do want to say that I had the privilege of attending a reclassification ceremony with Cecilia and my peers here, and I was so excited to see 350 students that are multilingual, and I think Cecilia and the team, I was just so inspired. And it was great to see a lot of our staff, their principals, like everyone, teachers, community liaisons. It was just really inspirational, and the team did a great job. So, just so honored to be a part of that ceremony. That's all I have to report.
Thank you for going. All of you.
So, yes, I also attended the reclassification that took place on Thursday, and I really enjoyed seeing parents and principals talking, community liaisons, and we are such a great team. I was very impressed. Parents were happy, children were happy. It was really amazing. I had the chance to speak with the Bahia Vista principal, and we will, we're gonna meet to see what's going on at Bahia Vista and work on it with our superintendent. That's all I have to report.
Okay, so, this is the, for, for our officers to see the program.
Yeah.
And also attended the reclassification event. At one time, I think parents got an incomprehensible letter saying your child has been reclassified and now is going to be in regular classes. And we have moved from that to celebrating at each school, and this event was a landmark event for Santa Fel City Schools, to have everybody in the room like that. But it wasn't just the students, and it wasn't just the parents and their little brothers and sisters, like, oh, my God, what's happening, and the grandparents, but it was the whole cabinet there, and all the principals, and the support people that they brought with them. And so, it really felt like a family. But what, we started with the, the itty-bitty ones. They're about this tall, and they're getting reclassified. Cecilia Perez made that happen. And then it goes all the way up to the future soccer stars and our, and football players and volleyball players in our high school. So, it was, it was just such a big family event. And just thank you, I think Cecilia, your whole team that pulled that off. And, you know, next year, y'all need to go.
Yes, yes, yes. It was just beautiful.
Yes, I was very sad not to be able to attend, but I knew we were in good hands with three of our board trustees attending. And I also just want to shout out these, the idea for this event, I think, was Cecilia's. And I think it's so important to acknowledge the hard work that has gone in, that each of these students had to put in in order to get this certificate of reclassification. We've had many presentations about long-time, you know, long-time ELs, how many years it takes to become reclassified. It is not easy to be bilingual. It is, because that's what it is. It is, they're, they are fluent in two languages. And I think when we created Cecilia's position to have someone dedicated at the cabinet level to be looking at this, this was really the vision. So, to have 359 students meet this vision through their hard work and the support of the principals, every teacher that was there, our community liaisons, was really very special. So, congratulations again. The other things I've, I've been up to, we did a lot of negotiation on the contract this past week. And I also had a Marin County School Boards Association meeting this morning because we're gonna have an end-of-the-year event, March, sorry, May 31st at Rancho Acostio. So, this will be a celebration event, and we were kind of talking about who the keynote speakers might be. But I think it'll be a great event and really an acknowledgement of all the hard work that school boards and superintendents have been doing all throughout the county. Okay.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Emily Bush, because Emily's been filling in for Marina while she's been out in Teresa, so thank you for being here. Marina's husband, Joaquin, is doing a lot better, so he's hopefully getting, maybe get out and out of the hospital and heading to an acute care place. So, we keep our fingers crossed and prayers for Marina and her husband. Continuing on with Job Shadows, so I shadowed probably four departments full, and I still have the other six or seven to go, which has been great. We're having Student Advisory Council on Wednesday. I'm gonna call you tomorrow, so we're gonna be looking over the Youth Truth Survey. So, we haven't had a Student Advisory Council meeting in a little while. Thursday is a school-to-career job shadow on Thursday, and then fortunately for us, Carmen's on vacation this week, on Easter vacation. So, I'm gonna snag her a little bit, so she's gonna come and meet the principals tomorrow at our pack meeting, and then she'll come back on Friday. We have a little district breakfast, and then we're gonna touch base and lay out a schedule. So, I appreciate your making the time to come and.
I canceled the trip to New York for this.
Yeah, so again, welcome aboard. Excited about the next week.
Great, thank you, Cham. And also want to acknowledge, and all the work that she has done to, to help us get through this difficult time when Marina is with her husband, as she should be. Okay, now, the next item is public comment on non-agendized items. Do we have anyone in the room? Yes, please.
I don't, I just arrived.
Oh, come on.
I hope it's non-agenda.
Oh, no. Do you want to tell us what the item is, and I can tell you if it's on the agenda?
Supporting teachers in their burning.
It's not on the agenda, so you can, you can step up. And, and just as a reminder, step up to the podium, and if you could fill out a blue card, just so we have it for the meeting minutes.
Okay. I apologize for not letting you go.
That's okay. And just as a reminder, so board policy, and for anyone online that wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand. The board policy is, public comments have to be under three minutes, and, that's, yeah. And we can't go over 20 minutes, but I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. So, go ahead, please.
Okay. My name's Claire Kribsbach. I'm a native of Marin County. I've lived in San Amish my whole life. My kids raised here, went to Santa Fel City Schools, and my granddaughter just started at Amish Valley in the immersion program. Not being more excited for how my sons were educated and for the fact that now my granddaughter's gonna be in school there. I'm a forty-one-year-old, I mean, I'm a forty-one veteran high school teacher, retired for a few years now, and I saw on that J, the Santa Fel school teachers are working so hard to get raises, and it broke my heart. Because I know, I know everybody's having problems getting the money, but I just thought, my little daughter Isabella, I mean, granddaughter Isabella, I've already been to her school. The teachers are working so hard, and all I can think is, they have to be paid. And I just can't stand the fact that here we are, Marin County, and I know things have changed, and I know that there's problems where we're working to find the money, all that, but fine, all of you get to go find the money, find the money. I want our kids, my grandchildren, to have a good education. I want to find out that this beloved teacher that my granddaughter had, and I have another one coming up, she's a baby, that now they went someplace else because they got more money, or they just had, or the student, or the teachers at Davidson. I started my career in middle school. Those people are saints. And I know the fact that, I read that they're gonna try to give them an extra period that they don't have to teach. But for middle school people, seriously, that's just another burden for them. It means they have a longer day. And quite frankly, I never did understand why the high school teachers are the ones that got paid more. The elementary kids' teachers should get paid more. I mean, I know that's not how it works now, but seriously, do what you can to have them all be as high, much paid as those high school teachers already are, because that's what they deserve. And I just am here to plead, do that, please. Whoever can do it, I don't know who all is in charge of it, but, yeah. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. And if you, if you could fill out one of the. Thank you so much. And Christina, do we have anyone online?
Again, those who wish to make a public comment on Zoom, can use the raise hand feature. See none.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Marin County School Boards Association survey, and I believe that's Emily Holorn, who's my colleague on the Marin County School Boards Association. So, I get to see you twice a Monday, Emily.
Once a person, even.
Yes.
Thank you for having me, and welcome.
Thank you.
I feel lucky to be here. So, and I actually selfishly am glad you're here for this, since you'll be the one getting to work. And so, I am Emily Yulhorn. I am on the TAM District School Board, recently of the Mill Valley School Board, work with Gina on the Marin County School Board Association. Board, are we a board? Or I think we're a board. And got involved in this effort from just attending a meeting, much like I hope you will all join us on May 31st. So, this is really all about looking at ways for us to work together across the district, or across the county on behalf of kids. So, we can go ahead and go to the next.
You can also.
Oh, I can do it.
Oh, look at that.
Just directed towards my computer. I'm.
All right.
So, just by way of introduction, I want to say that I am just a small part of this. So, Denise Foman is the other trustee from Long Island, who's been working hard on it. But a huge, huge thanks to Ken Lippie and to Michelle Drake up at the county for all of their work leading us. We're gonna talk super fast about current subcommittees, and then really most of it'll be about our planning and goals. And then the survey will come to you via email, just because of the Brown Act is something we can't have you sit and all do privately in a public meeting. So, you all probably are very well aware of all of the abilities to get in the way to collaborate with your colleagues across the county. So, I won't read this to you, but we all know about E2, and obviously JLEC, which Gina is the chair of or co-chair of, and then Golden Bell. So, these are all existing ways that our districts work together. The school board members have the ability to come together along with superintendents. And then what we're talking about today are additional ways that we could potentially collaborate. So, what got us here was it started almost a year ago, just at, it was actually Mary Jane's last MCSBA meeting before the election, and she really set the frame for us of how do we broaden our view to really think about all kids in the county being our kids and not just the students in our individual districts. And so, can we, you know, really broaden that view and think of ways that we can work together to improve the educational outcomes for all kids and hopefully level, you know, the field for all kids so that they all have these same opportunities across our county. So, that was really the frame with which we started brainstorming. And that meeting, you know, people sort of sat in small groups and talked about ways that we could potentially work together.
That's right.
And then from there, anyone who was silly enough to put their name on a board, joined the Next Steps Committee, and we met under the guidance of Ken and Michelle over the summer to really kind of take that huge list and try to call it down a little bit, to then bring it back again to the big group, to then bring it back again, you know, kind of narrow it down further. So, it really has been an iterative process and has been a process that has had many, many voices, you know, taken into account, and people able to sit in small groups, people able to, you know, take surveys to brainstorm. We went to E2 also and got feedback there. We presented most recently at the superintendent's meeting and got feedback there in the form of survey and had the opportunity for questions. And then our hope, and it's looking pretty good in terms of responses, is to go to every school board meeting throughout the spring to really then be in front of you, but even more so, get the feedback back, back via a survey. Because as we all know, it's a self-selected group of people who either are able to or who are interested in serving on the smaller subcommittees, or who can even go to the MCSBA events. And so, we want to really try to capture the thoughts of the school boards, every single member, you know, of every school board in Marin County, which is why I'm here, and then hoping to get people interested enough to fill out the survey, which won't take long, I promise. So, as I said, it's been an iterative process, and we sort, you know, called down, you know, what, what were people interested in. In that May meeting, these are really the four things that kind of bubbled to the top as we, you know, sort of pulled together all the different ideas and tried to categorize them. And some of that work is already being done at the county. Some of it, like TK, at this point, you know, hopefully you're swimming your way through that. But, you know, to really think about starting that collaborative process this year is a little late, right? So, some of the things, you know, as we then looked in the Next Steps Committee, you know, met with Ken and Michelle, went back to the group, we realized, okay, well, we're not gonna be able to focus on all of them. So, what we focused on was number two, which was how to expand meaningful collaboration and consolidation and sharing of services. I think, you know, one question that continuously comes up in our community is, why do we have, you know, so many districts in Marin County, right? Some are tiny, some are huge, some are TK-12, right, some are small. And I think, you know, we all in this room know the reality of merging districts is incredibly complex, very lengthy. You know, you lose a lot through local control. And is it good for kids, right? I think people generally come at that question from a money-saving perspect, money savings perspective, and less from a, how can it improve access and the educational outcomes for our kids? And that's, I think, why we're all here, right? So, when we think about ways to collaborate and consolidate, we're not talking about consolidating districts. We're talking about services, potentially, or maybe even, you know, sharing positions. So, just to be clear in terms of what we're talking about here, the question, you know, very specifically has come up, is this like the first step to consolidating? And that's not why we're here. This is really all thinking about ways that we can collaborate to hopefully create better outcomes for the kiddos in Marin County. So, as I said, the survey is going to come to you. It's a little weird. I maybe would have been better, actually, now that I'm here doing this the first time in this format, to have it up, so you could at least kind of see it. But what we're gonna be asking for, right, is how can we do that meaningful collaboration and consolidation? We have about fifteen items, and then, of course, an option, you know, where you can add more information as you would like. But thinking about things that you think really, A, you know, are attainable, can we actually do it? And then, of course, you know, are they critical? Are they crucial? But at the end of the day, it has to be something that's realistic. And so, I think that's where, of course, the expertise of our superintendents comes in, right? Because we, as board members, might have all the, you know, best ideas in the world, but they and their teams are the ones who are actually all, you know, implementing things from sort of day to day. So, we think, as people who are, you know, excited about this, that there are reasons for all of us to want to share our services, right? I mean, it might be a large district, it might be a small district, it might be a financial issue, it might be just an economies of scale issue. And so, what we're looking to find from this survey is, we might find some spots where there's just like three districts who are saying, oh, we really need to share a special ed coordinator, right? We don't have the economies of scale to hire our own, and we're all looking for this one particular thing. We, and we will then share that information out. When it comes to, you know, the larger districts, right, we're thinking about things that might be more across the county. So, DEI training for parents could be an example. You know, some backend operations could be an example. You know, there might still be potential sharing of, of positions, right? So, maybe you really want to hold on to that French program, but the high school is shrinking, and the same thing is happening in the TAM district. So, can we share a French teacher, right? So, it's ways to kind of try to tease out sort of the small, but then also the big. And then even more than that, just the general willingness, right? Is there really interest from school board trustees and from superintendents at looking more deeply at ways that we can come together and share resources? Again, really all being about kids. Um, and share resources. Again, really all being about kids, right? Because we're all, that's why we're here. And so we're looking for ways that we can create, you know, more opportunities for our kids. Um, and whether that is directly, you know, to the kid or whether that is an opportunity that we can give parents through larger economies of scale or teachers or other staff, you know, but at the end of the day, I'm thinking about the 35,000 kids in Marin. So that is basically it. Um, I'm going to send you the survey tonight, so you will all get that and I hope you'll return it. We will analyze the data, right? So we're going to look at, are there individual pieces we need to just share out with districts? Um, and then, you know, at the, the bigger picture, right, are there places that we think, okay, eight districts said they're all interested in, um, you know, collaborating on professional development. Seven said they're interested in, you know, opening up parent education opportunities to the entire county. Um, and so then we'll plan. Um, and so of course there's a place in the survey if anyone wants to get involved. Um, and then, you know, obviously we will share all of the data back out. Um, so that's it. And I learned tonight that I need to have the survey here so everybody can see it. So any other, um, any questions, you know, feedback? Now is great. If you have any follow-up questions, you know, anyone can email me or call and ask as well.
Uh, before I go to trustee questions, I want to see if we have any public comment either, either in the room or online. If so, please raise your hands.
Seen none.
Okay. Um, any questions for Emily about this process? I have a few comments I want to make, but any questions from anyone?
No questions, just excited to see this happening. And the School Boards Association from Marin County taking this on. So this is wonderful.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say this is super exciting. Thank you for leading the charge.
Just, I'm just a part of it.
Nobody helps a lot to have somebody come in and talk to us all. So thank you for making the time to do that so that we also have that personal connection. I appreciate the many emails that we receive, but definitely that personal connection makes a, makes a difference. So I really appreciate you being here. And I presume that this is mostly just a big gathering information, right? We're just trying to gather the interest that folks may have to maybe potentially go in in this direction or that direction and just, just keep people's interest. Just an other question, how many trustees we have in Marin County? Just sorry, you may have, you know, you know. How many, how many recipients did you have in this area?
Seventeen districts.
Yeah, so I was gonna say.
They're all like eighty.
It looks like there's, you know, a hundred people.
A hundred people.
Yeah.
All right. And we had the best turnout at the MCSBA at the last meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was the last one.
Yeah, it was, it was great. Uh, so I do think there's also some momentum around people enjoying that collaboration and collegiality. So hopefully this will all continue to go.
I know, but I do have one question. Um, we've, yeah, I was on E2 for a few years and we, we always thought about bringing in the CBOs. Because they're the ones who are watching the dollars and know what we have to spend and what we don't and where the alliance. And so I was wondering if you're surveying them or meeting with them as well and the superintendents.
We are not, but that's really, really good feedback. I think we should be. Thank you.
I will gladly sign up in either.
We have a regular meeting too.
We could just come to one of your.
Can join the E2 that I'm.
You're gonna do the presentation, are you? How do you decide you're gonna present to the CBOs?
I just want to acknowledge, so, um, so, you know, many people were at that event, uh, a year ago at this point. And Emily really stepped up on this. Emily Antonis. This has been a lot of work, a lot of time. All volunteer. And I just want to acknowledge the leadership that, that Emily and Denise have shown on this. And, um, this is really, it's, it's, in a way, it's sort of matchmaking. It's how can we collaborate together? Because at the end of the day, they're all our kids. And if we learn nothing from the tenure of Mary Jane Berg, it's that that is what is most critical. Yes, we have seventeen school districts, but at the end of the day, they are all our children. So thank you for your leadership on this, Emily. It is a pleasure to serve with you on, um, MCSBA. And, um, we will, we will all, we will all fill out your survey.
Yeah, well, a hundred percent. You'll get a hundred percent.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Oh, oh, Tess has a question. Sorry, Tess has a question.
Sorry, um, I wasn't part of this meeting, so you might have already answered this, but I just, uh, wanted to ask, and I'm sure you are, but you, is, are those conversations also happening with teacher unions and, and staff and faculty? The conversations about possibly sharing, say, a position with different schools? Cause I think, uh, that would be something which they would be interested in weighing in on, especially because I'm, I know this is nitpicky, but would the teacher move from school to school or would the kids go to different schools for the classes? Just curious.
So there are districts now that do share, um, I don't know many that share teachers, but I know, like, we share a behavioralist um, in Larkspur, Cordoba, Dara and Mill Valley, for example, and the adult travels from place to place. Um, but certainly if it got to a point that there were any shared positions, that's something that has to be bargained and agreed to. So that wouldn't be something that, you know, we would be deciding among ourselves that was going to happen. But no, those conversations are not yet happening, um, like with unions, because this is really just data gathering. And so this is where we would maybe find out, um, that, you know, Sam Raffel also needs a behavioralist and, you know, so does Longanitas, but they only noted like, you know, a point one and zip, right? So this is where we would pull together that information that there's even desire to look at that. And then those next steps would be down the line.
Sounds very good.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Kristen too. Okay, our next, um, report is the Youth Truth Family and Student Survey Results. So Jim, I think you're keeping us all.
Yeah, so Christina and I have been working on this and Christina is really the point person, but we'll work together on, on sharing this. Spent a lot of time this weekend looking through the results and I'll just tell you that, um, it's a great resource for us and it still can be overwhelming. I mean, just for example, this is the middle school student survey report, double-sided. So that's just one report. Remember, we have middle school, high school and elementary, and then there's student, staff and parents. I think that had to pick the most important one was the students, because our students are our clients and we don't listen to them as much as we should. But the data is super helpful and super informative. So even when Christine and I were trying to, um, prepare this presentation, it's hard because you could, I mean, I spent four hours on it on Sunday and Christine has spent hours and our principals have spent hours on it. So really what we want to do tonight is tell you how we're using the survey. I would also say that the survey is more important at the school sites than it is at the district. I mean, it is important to see trends at the district. But my, I think that our job is really to support our principals to use the, the survey material well. And again, there's so much that they have to kind of narrow it down as well. And, um, so with that little intro, um, I think we've used truth for about four years. It's a national nonprofit. There's over 2 million students and stakeholders surveyed in nineteen states. One of the benefits to us is it's a great comparison. So there's a hundred and seventy schools surveyed in California. So when Christina shows you one of the things later on, you kind of compare your district, how we did, you know, last time we took it to, you know, two years ago. And then it's also got a California line for how the California schools did. And that's really important. It's something you're like, well, uh, you know, three points, the, the, the score that professional development got was three point seven out of five in terms of people liking it. And you're like, well, is that good or not? You don't, you know, maybe that's great. If, if the rest of California is at a two, two point O, then that's great. So the fact that they survey all these other states and California, I think is really great. It gives us a good comparison. And their, their mission is to, um, it's actually really, it's called Youth Truth. So they did focus on students, but it's really to try to make sure that we use that information well. So this is just a history. We first started using it in twenty eighteen, nineteen in the spring in a partnership with Marin Community Foundation. They paid for it the first couple of years, which is awesome. Cause it is about, how much is it? Like $20,000 ish? So it's not cheap. So we just started the Behaviors to San Pedro and Benicia Valley. Those were P3 schools from Marin Community Foundation. Uh, we gave it again in the spring of 2020, uh, skipped 2020, 21 due to COVID. I gave it in the fall last year and we switched to this winter this year in February is when we gave it. The thought being that December is just a really busy month. There's a lot going on at the end of the year. I mean, our students and our staff are, are captive audience and we always should, we need to do a little better. We should have eighty-five to ninety percent because they're here. But really the parents are the ones that are harder for us to reach. And it just seems like in December, with all the winter Christmas activities, there's a lot going on. So I think, I, I do think we should be consistent and kind of not go back and forth. And so Christine and I were talking, it, the February seems to be, there's not a lot of other things going on before all the testing comes up or all that stuff. So anyway. The other thing that's a little difficult about it is that the, the areas that they asked the staff is different from the areas they ask the parents, which is different from the areas they ask the students. So you can see there's a lot of crossover. So engagement is asked to all three relationships and culture um, and diversity, equity, inclusion, those four areas, everybody gets asked those questions. So those are kind of the crux of it. But you can see some things like academic challenge is only asked to students. Belonging and peer collaboration is only asked to students. College and peer readiness is only asked for high school. Communication and feedback for parents, resources for parents, school safety for parents and staff. And then professional development and support, obviously that's only asked the staff. And then student voice and leadership is only asked to students. And as I said, diversity, equity and inclusion to everybody. So, so even the what's covered is different. And then, okay, there you go. I would also say that so within each of those categories, like let's say engagement, there's anywhere from five to maybe ten questions. So that's it. So you get an overall score for kind of engagement, but then you go in and see, well, do you, you know, do you like what you're learning? Are you interested in yourself? Like blah, blah, blah. So you can go down into all those ones in, in a lot of detail.
And across the levels, the questions are customized and much more age-appropriate depending on which group they're talking to.
Okay, so, um, Together 2024 is baked into our Together 2024 goal. So one of the ways of looking at student voice is by looking at our SMART goal. So the SMART goal is, uh, that students at every school, we use the U2 student survey to identify three priority areas and take action on each. And the student advisory council will also take action on their talk concerns district-wide. So each principal knows that this is too overwhelming to work there. In elementary, kind of like the student council in fourth and fifth grade, that's who takes it. In middle school, same thing. And then in high school, there's different groups. There's student voice, there's, um, SLAM, there's ASB. So the principals have, or know to work with those groups, um, and get their feedback on it. And again, what are, what we've asked them for is what are the three main areas that are, that are going well according to students? And what are the three areas that need to be improved? So all my principals know that they're to be doing, and they're to be doing that with parents and then with staff as well, right? Because they shouldn't be taking it on. It's too much input. And then also the student advisory council will also take, take, will look at this on Wednesday. So we have our student advisory council meeting. We'll divide them up into some of those different areas, have them take a look at it and see what they think. So, um, I mean, my big learning on student advisory council, again, as I've said, is it's students again are more interested in their high school. Like they're in like Texas, you said, or in Terre Linda, but you might not be that interested in the whole district stuff. So it's harder to, actually, you're not a good example. So there are other kids.
Normal.
Normal high school kids are only interested in their own school. So you're a bright shining example of the exception. But in general, so it's been harder to get student advisory council going at the district level. So I will actually be talking to, um, probably Tess and Donna more than anybody about kind of how that would work in the future. Maybe it's really working through the student board reps. You've been fantastic and, you know, Talia and Sophia last year were super helpful. So I, I need to kind of make a recommendation for next year in terms of how we use to voice at the district level. Cause it's just hard to get traction. It's hard to ask kids to come here and whatever. So anyway, we're meeting on Wednesday. Okay, the second SMART goal, um, was around staff success to provide quality professional development. So I've talked to Stephanie and Tyler about this. We did not write a SMART goal for PD, but the following information may be helpful in the staff surveys, because again, it is asked to them. So the, it's a question is, you know, how, how well is professional development supporting you? And there's actually, I think, six or seven different areas under there. What's a little problematic about it is it's not really clear as if it's the support that they're getting from their school site or the support they're getting from the district. So we can only, I mean, we do work with our principals to hopefully support their teachers. But Tyler and Stephanie are only, they get a lot better, actually more, um, specific feedback after they do a professional development day. So they're both really good. Tyler with the teacher leadership team. And also at the high school, when they have a PD day or when Stephanie has an early release Wednesday, they'll get feedback from the teachers right then. So that's actually more helpful to us, because that's a PD that we're running. Whereas if Statton is running something over in Davidson, you know, then, so it kind of gets muddled in there. But I think it would still be good to kind of use this as a way to kind of see how is it going? How are teachers feeling overall? And in general, um, at elementary and high school, um, so remember there, the score, you can give a one to a five. One, I think, is disagree and strongly disagree, agree, I think it's neutral, agree and strongly, uh, agree. So a five is the highest you can get. And there's ranges on, on this thing, anywhere from one to four is probably the highest that you would ever see. So it's actually improved. The PD responses at elementary went from three point four one to three point five seven, which is significant. And high school rose from three point three two to three point four five. Um, and then middle school fell from three point two seven to two point nine seven. So two out of the three areas, we had an improvement in terms of teacher feeling that the PD was, um, relevant, meaningful, engaging, supportive, and that they were supported in their own, you know, growth and learning. So we will talk about whether we want to add that into the Together 2024 goals or not. And then finally, this is actually where it's probably most specific is in community engagement to increase outreach and support for vulnerable families. And so we, um, wanted to increase parent involvement by five percent. So we had a twenty-five percent average response rate, um, in 2021. And the survey results showed an improvement. And so you can see across the board that we actually did that. Overall, except they're in high school. So again, there's family survey results. So this is it. So there's a participation. So at elementary rose from thirty-one, excuse me, to fifty-five of the respondents, sixty-two percent identify as Latino. So that's up six percent. In middle school, it rose from twenty-one percent to twenty-nine. And of the respondents, fifty-three percent identified as Latino, which was up eleven percent. And then the high school fell from twenty percent to eleven percent of the respondents, twenty-five percent identified as Latino, which was up five percent. As a new principal, the, um, you know, we try to support them with how important this is. And I would just say on Joe's behalf, because it was actually at Santa Fe High where the parent responses, it's really hard to get parent responses again. Staff and students are sitting in the school, so you should be able to get those. But the outreach it takes to get parents to respond takes a lot of work. And so that's really my fault for not working the Joe to make sure that he understood as a new, as a new principal, it's overwhelming and they don't realize. So that's actually on me, not on him. But that's the main reason actually right there that the high school was down. It's because it's the Santa Fe parent race we're in.
And then Terre Linda, you mean?
Yes. And that's because Katie knows exactly that this is really important and what she's supposed to be doing. So she's been, she'd been doing it for the last four years. She's got a better sense of it. The other two areas, we said that we wanted to see improvement and, and overall in engagement and in communication and feedback with parents. And, um, happily, all of those improved. So parent engagement, uh, you can see elementary rose from three point nine with a four point oh four, which is very, and four is very hard to find on the scale. Middle school too, from three point five nine to three point six five, and high school from three point three six to three point four one. And then communication and feedback, um, again, elementary, that's really high, four point oh five to four point eighteen. Middle, three point six five to three point seven seven, and high school from three point three two to three point three nine. So those specific areas that we targeted, we did improve on those. Okay, so going into kind of the certain, kind of the themes or some trends that came out of it. So this is kind of showing you overall with student voice on key themes, how did the students feel? I, I would say overall that the responses to the survey were down this year. I would definitely say that. It kind of, right, well, across the board. And there were some areas that did go up. You just saw some of them. But across the board, I would say they were down slightly from, from the last time we took it. So there was kind of a big jump between like twenty-one and twenty-two or twenty to twenty-two. And this year, again, overall, if you look, this is pretty much, and it's not super high, like you can see, you know, engagement was down three percent. Relationships, two percent, one percent are up a little bit, but overall, um, the middle school is the other one. You, middle school was down significantly. Um, I'm working with Michael on that. It was primarily at Davidson, to be honest. Kind of across the board. Um, there's some work we need to do there with, um, looking at these results and how do we use these results to work with, with staff and, and to find out from students and parents where those are. So Tyler will be supporting him in that, just to be honest. So middle school was, was one that was pretty significantly down. And you can see high school was down a little bit also from five to seven percent in terms of those. Those are kind of the core engagement, relationships, culture, academic challenges. Those are the key areas of the survey.
And just to point out the colors. So again, because this is a comparison school with us year to year, but also with the school districts across California is what these are comparing to, those percentiles. So those show within the that specific area where we fall within the larger scope of the schools in California, where our percentile is among those. So obviously, we don't want to be in red and we want to be in green. So each area, you can see where we fall along that continuum.
Can you give me an example, please? Because I'm having a hard time understanding what state, what is ours and what's a comparison?
So these, all these numbers up here are ours.
Yeah, the full numbers.
Yeah, so that 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 shows like so eighty seven percent responded positively.
Yeah.
And that's down three percent than from last year.
From last year.
And it's purple. So we fall within the fifty to seventy fourth percentile of schools in California that have rated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're purple because we are between the fiftieth and seventy fourth percentile. And and for example, okay.
So look at belonging is actually an interesting one because it's only thirty nine percent.
Yeah.
But it's in the seventy fifth to a hundred percentile in terms of where that falls. So you really have to look at those comparisons at some times and not just look at the actual number.
And engagement's eighty seven percent, but it's in the fiftieth to seventy fourth percentile.
Well, what does it say about schools in California like? I mean, I'm sorry. But yes, that's a, that's a, okay. Oh, thank you. That's super helpful.
Come back. So whatever, save your questions and there's probably more data you're gonna want or need.
I needed to listen to the slide.
You want to make a comment?
Sure. So this talks, again, we we picked out some of the specific ones to pull out of these larger of these larger areas. So the relationships students have with their teachers and the other adults in their schools is is really critical, we believe, to their success. So this gives the average rating. Note that the elementary schools, again, more age appropriate. It's a smaller scale. So it's a a one, two, three rating. So that's that's why that's a little bit lower, just because the scale is lower. And then the middle and high have the scale as well. And those are just some of the examples of the questions that you can that you would see within the survey that the students respond to. And how some of them, like the like this here, when I'm feeling upset, there's an adult from school that I can talk to about that's asked in both elementary and middle. And the others are are more geared towards elementary or high school. And again, that those same, we didn't put the key here. But if you can remember the percentile, we obviously don't want to be red and want to be green. We don't have those. But we do have some of the red and orange here. So work, this demonstrate there's work to do.
I'm confused about this one too. Sorry, Christina. So the red, why is it red on middle school? Because of the state, what it what?
Yeah. Compared to comparable districts.
Compared to districts in California.
The legend didn't follow this line.
Yep, it did. There it is.
Okay, okay. So they just left the other slide, didn't follow. Okay.
And later on, Christina is actually going to go into the survey and show, and you can actually see where we see most of them, which is that there's a a number for this year, how that compares to California, how that compares to other districts and all that.
Sure. Yep. Again, some looking at where some of those questions where we did really well and where we have work to do, where we have some opportunity to grow. For each of the areas within these themes, we pulled out where students rated as highest and where, again, within those comparative districts where we have work to do. So this, that within those areas, so for elementary, we're doing really well with students when they think about what do we learn in class, how they help you in your life. So our teachers are doing a great job of connecting their learnings to their life. Seems like we have opportunity and what what we, what students think their teachers want you to work your hardest. Do you think your teachers want you to work your hardest? We are in the thirty percentile for that in that area. And middle, again, the the highest is students from my school treat and do treat adults with respect. Actually, I think that got, yes, that's correct. And then middle school, in order to get a good grade, I have to work hard in my class. We're in the fifth percentile for that. So. Where we rated the highest for high school, for students, how often do you work with other students in your class because your teachers ask or tell you to? And then where the lowest was how many of your teachers make an effort to understand what your life is like outside of school?
No. It is.
This is again pulling out. So we looked at those big themes for the student survey. So looking at the family survey. So these are parents taking the survey. Again, it's it's a little bit more positive. Oh, we forgot to do the color. Sorry about that on the last the last column for high schools. Apologies for that. But some more improvement that you see than you than you did with the students.
It's not surprising. It's highest at elementary, dropped down in middle, and then dropped down more in high school.
And remember, we talked a lot about bullying last year, one of the categories. So we wanted to revisit that and show some some growth in some areas. So the family survey shows it's a little bit more even. The the rate up and down, the drop is is minimal, if that if any. So really static there. And the student voices, so we actually don't want them to go up here. Because if you look at the question, has anyone bullied harassed you in the last year? And these are students saying yes. So that's that's going up. So that's not what we want to see.
Especially in middle school.
Yeah.
Wow.
And if you look at, again, it's not that we want anybody to be bullied anywhere, but we do have some comparison and we are within what is the typical school. But obviously, we want to be way below that. All right, talking about using the the data.
Okay, so all the principals know that my expectation is that for students and staff, it should be about eighty five to ninety percent. If you don't give it to a staff member in a staff meeting, then you're going to have a hard time getting it and take it. So that's what you have to do. Students should admit your your scheduling, we take it in their whatever P E slash whatever they do. So that's our expectation. And the goal with family participation, which is harder, I think we need to keep that goal of at least a five percent increase every time. And there were some schools, it's a little easier in elementary. I think a Polnare at Bonita Valley was probably the highest one. And they bribe kids to, if they if they fill that out and brought it back, they got a pizza par- or whatever. They did things to make kids
We should do that.
And get their parents to fill it out. So again, it's a lot harder to do that at high school and middle school. So anyway, that's our expectation. They all know that I expect them to use the results for their school plans. So Tyler and Steph and I are working with them to make sure that in their SIPs is this is a great way to measure qualitative data. Not, we have quantitative data through different ways, but qualitative data is hard to get a measure for. So this is a great way to do that. U truth consultants have met with each principal to review their school U truth results. We paid to have them for an hour, leave with them to go through it as opposed to us trying to do it or whatever. So I think that was helpful. Then my expectation as a principal is we'll be with PTO, school site councils, and their site English language advisory committees to look at the results, work with their staff, look at the results and work with their students and that they don't try to take that on all themselves. And also, it can be a little, you know, people focus on the negative. There are comments. There are tons of comments, and we're looking for patterns. So yes, if ten people say something, then maybe we want to start looking at it. But you know, you get one person who says, you know, Principal Bob's an idiot, and you, they're hardened. It's hard to take all this information. They would never say that.
Such a boss of all the people. You're making very much sound.
Yeah, the comments are very specific.
The comments are kind of brutal. And so we talk to them, I don't try not to get defensive, look at the big picture. But it is overwhelming. And it's, and what we try to tell them is use your your te- let your teacher book it and tell you what they, you know, what they think. Or let the parents tell you or let the students tell you. It's not all a reflection on you as a principal. It's the system, it's the school. So, you know, try to be open to what it has to say. But it is even in figuring out where our focus, do we focus on relationships? Or do we focus on engaging? Or do we focus on culture or whatever? So yeah. At the district, again, I'll be working the student advisory council, look at the results. Tyler and Stephanie are working with the, well, Tyler with his teacher leadership team, and then Stephanie will work with the coaches to kind of look at the results at the district level. As I say, and Pepe will work with D-LAC to kind of go over with our Spanish speaking parents, what the results were from families. And then Christine and I will also use these results at our next parent advisory council meeting to get their input on things. So we'll just look at and try to cut it down and narrow it down for.
Do you mean to jump in some of the reports and just click around?
Yeah, just and then and then we'll open up. But I I just want you to see what it looks like and, you know, give you access to it or we can, we can, if you want specific reports about either schools or whatever, we can do that for you. But so yeah, you click on which survey you want, you click on what year you want.
So this can be elementary, the family center. So this is looking at this year. So we can see our trend data across the years, whether average rating. This shows where the California schools are, that percentile.
Oh, that's super helpful. Oh, this is helpful.
So on all those, yeah.
Yep. And then so if you wanted to look at engagement, you would drill down. You would see, again, the overview.
Oh, this is.
Where the the past several years, each school where they fall. California schools here.
So it shows your district for the past year. There's there's so much data. You can you can drill down by gender, by race, by ethnicity, by like the staff, how long they've been at the school. I mean, it's really.
And you, so then you see the different questions that make up engagement. So that's how they get that that compared that score earlier. It's made up of all these questions. So you can see this.
So engagement is actually, as you can see, one of the bright spots where we're we're high, we're pretty much above where California is. So you can always see where the California one is so that kind of, and we went up quite a bit from where we were last time.
And if we wanted to compare ourselves to to high poverty schools or smaller small city schools.
You can filter it.
And we could show where we are with that comparison.
I think it's really important that we have that time for the consultant to meet with each school site because not, I mean, not every, this is almost like graduate level understanding of statistics and qualitative research. And, oh, I I had to click eager of this grad school. It's really hard to, there's so much information that it could, it probably can feel a little overwhelming, as we've said. So I think it's great that they have that that hour to be able to ask questions and figure out how to drill down. So that's, I'm glad that's part of the contract.
Could do it by most language learners.
I was going to say, Gina, so when I was on school site council, like Glenwood, we had the consultant with Mr. Richardson as we were looking at the future plan, and we still were confused. So if someone else, if someone else on cabinet could be there to be like, this is what, it just was like super confusing. And I think, as you highlighted, there can be some really specific comments that elevate emotions. And so I do think that it's not only confusing, but when you're in your school site and you get pretty let's just say.
There are pointed comments about individuals.
Yeah, it's really important that we figure out how do we communicate this and.
No one sees those comments except the principal, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, so no one sees the names.
The names, except the themes. It could be the themes.
Yeah, but we don't show that. We don't show those comments with anybody else.
That's more, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I could say Linda Jackson is a model, you know, it's it has everybody's, even if you redacted the name, we've, there's, there's there's like ten to fifteen pages of comments.
But only the principal sees that. But even so, the principal needs to, you know, it's like you, how do you deal with the random comments? And understand statistically, what's a significant move or trend to pull out about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Is this link, sorry, no, go ahead, Justin.
You sure?
Go, go ahead, please.
Just could you talk a little bit about how youth truth arrives with their questions and how the questions accurately demonstrate engagement, community, et cetera?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you pick one? When you pick one, there's like, there's not a large number of questions about it. What is, I think, culture might not have, I'm not sure. So they've been given this. One of the nice things is that this is all normed. It's something they've been giving for a long time. They've got a lot of history with it or whatever. So I can't say exactly how they decided that looks like a culture. Students from my school treat adults with respect. Oh, this isn't the right good one, but go ahead, because there's a lot of questions about it. You have adults from my school treat students with respect. I think my classroom mates want to do well in school. Discipline in the school is fair. This one has a ton. I feel safer in school. So I'm not sure how they came up with, like, again, some of them will have twelve with questions and some will only have six. But I trust that they've been doing this for a really long time. They have a lot of meetings about it. You can go to this, you can go to like a conference with students who will talk about it. Oh, these are the schools. And these are some areas that they've really worked on. The students helped them improve the stuff. So it's all, that's what I appreciate is that the number of schools who give this gives us a great comparison. But in terms of how they came up with those, I can't.
So typically, I'll just, I don't know about this specific survey, but there is a whole a lot of research about surveys in general, and all the questions that are asked are normed. And so they had some iterative process where you're asking questions to make sure that you're getting the appropriate response to each question. And given the sample size that they have, I guarantee you they have done that work. So I really feel like I'm back in grad school. Yeah, it's it's, they they, anytime you take any sort of poll, political poll, anything, it's all normed. So.
One of the things we do here is that the survey is too long. We can't control it, except what we can control is that with your, with what you pay, you can get two like extra areas to look at. I think one year we chose math when I, I think my first year, and then another year we chose something else. But then I'm like, we're not going to do that because it's already long enough. It's already so informative on so many fronts. It's like, well, yeah, get more information. It's like we don't have to ask five or ten more questions. It's not. So I think we're not going to take advantage of the extra question.
I think it took me, because Miller Creek also does youth truth. And I think, I think it took half an hour to fill it out.
Yeah, it takes twenty to thirty minutes.
It's a, it's a big time investment. Yeah.
How did, do you think you took it right?
I took it. So in at Terre Lenda, it was in our English classes all through all grades, since every grade has an English class. Each teacher gave up some of their class time to help people fill out the survey so they can also ask questions if they needed to. It took me around twenty minutes, twenty to thirty minutes, decently long survey.
So I think that, and we could show you whatever else you want, but I think that's, we just wanted to show you what it is and how we can get other information that you want, but that kind of the gist of our presentation.
Do you want, did you want to make?
I have a couple of questions. One is.
I'm gonna go to Marina next. Oh, I'm just, go ahead, trustee Jackson.
Okay. So in terms of the reviews, well, people get the survey results beforehand so that they can look through it. I'm thinking of the parents advisory council. We have a one hour meeting. We have other things we talk about. And so is it, it's, is it, how can it be more than us sharing what we what we've already come up with and and then saying we had that input when we haven't really had many, they haven't had a chance to really go through it on their own. So I'm I'm wondering how these results can be shared with groups beforehand so they have a chance to dive in or how that works. Because we've just spent, what, a half hour here?
Yeah.
If you had given it to us ahead of time, we might have spent a little extra time trying to figure it out. Anyway, I'm just trying to, how to get meaningful input.
Yeah, it's a great question. And the thing is like giving it to you ahead of time, then the thing is like, what is it that was like for you, with the whole thing, it's too much, right?
Right, right.
What will we give you ahead of time? There are executive summaries of every of the high school, middle school, elementary staff, students, and parents. You know what I mean? Like, we give you those overall ones with the parents. I mean, I mean, I would, we're clearly just looking at the parent at elementary, middle, and high school. So I think kind of going over. I mean, the hard thing is it's 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 so dense that it's almost like we would kind of try to look at the, I don't know, what do you mean?
And I think it would be similar to some of our parent leaders who might approach it as they get really interested in it at the district level at the learnings, and then they can't wait to go back and talk with their school principal. Because they're really, they're invested in us as a district, but they're really invested in their school communities. So I think I think Jim and I and others could probably review the high level data, and then they're going to want to know, how did my school do? And, right, we do.
So it's a teaser.
And it'll, it'll get them ready for those conversations. And it'll, it'll get them ready for those conversations with their principals.
So that's one of them, um, the results to us, to really find out what people found out, would we see that in the site plans then? Or do you anticipate they'll be coming back in some other way?
Yeah, so they would make a SMART goal and you would, like I'm thinking of San Pedro's last year, they, they honed in on exactly what you asked them to do. Choose three areas of focus and go in their site plan where it says, what's the, what does the data tell us? You'll see a summary of those three areas, so you would see part of the data, but, but sites are really getting asked to focus. And then from there, you'll see in their SIPSA, what did the data tell us and then what actions do we want to do in order to support that? So it won't be the full data set, it'll be the narrow set that they're focusing on. And generally, they're the high leverage ones we know, so engagement, relationship, depending on where they're focusing, kind of be around those.
I look forward to what they come up with, middle school, because those numbers are just very telling. Um, we actually saw those, see those in the, the dashboard as well, so, and that's why our focus is on Davidson Middle School and how we can make things better, particularly for the students, you know, when they, when those results.
Trustee Jackson, would you mind holding your last question, because I, I do wanna make sure we.
We just have one.
Oh, okay.
So it's a PowerPoint for this and it's not online for the agenda item, so I wanna be sure that this PowerPoint gets posted to the agenda item, so we can access it.
Yeah, very quick, um, I know, now I'm really concerned about middle school. And unfortunately, I mean, I'm glad and I hope that this, this survey will help make a difference. But I hear from the students, we don't need a survey, what their needs are. So my question is, after we get the results, and as Stephanie was saying, you're gonna streamline those, the main points of concern. How long till we see improvement? Is there a follow up to it? Have all these people, because this, this service, they take some time to complete. Are we gonna respond back to the students with the results and, and what the goals are gonna be and where, when does it really start taking place? To hopefully do another survey and, and see a difference.
Yes, well, you, so you won't see that there was an improvement till next year when we give this, you know, it's a year to year thing, but that doesn't mean, so let's just take Davidson Middle School as an example. So Tyler, I mean, Staton's already looked through it with his admin team, Tyler and I will go meet with him and, and go through it. And again, it's, the most important thing I think is to narrow the focus. Like what are the most important areas, it's the TRIM tab, if you push on that thing, if, if it's something about, that's one of those things that I remember reading up there that's very disturbing. Was students didn't feel that the staff wanted to get to know their background and experiences or something to that effect. So that's, maybe that's a key one, or you know, teachers don't respect students or students don't respect staff or what do you, so it's kind of like drilling into some of those key areas around, what I would say, relationships and culture. And which are the ones and say, this is a problem, I'm, I'm, let's say I'm the principal, I'm not just making this up, this is what people said. So maybe in Davidson, we would have the youth truth person come in and present the results, so it's not like Staton presented, it's like, these are the results, right? So, and so then the question would be, this is how people feel, you can't really argue with that, it's, it's, so then the question is, students, what suggestions do you have about how, let's, but not the whole thing, let's narrow it down to these three areas, which were the, maybe the lowest and the biggest bang for your buck. What do you think, so, okay, we have, this is, what's going well here, these three, and then these three things, we really would wanna just focus on those three, because we can't do the whole thing. But if you hit those three things, maybe other things will happen as well. And then work with the students or work with the staff or work with the parents, because each, the parents were actually higher than, than staff and students in some areas. So that's kind of what we try to do is get them to narrow down the focus to what's, what's really gonna make a big difference at it. And then work with those groups to see what we can do to get an action plan and that, that's to Linda's point, that should be in their school plan. That they're putting together now in spring.
So whatever actual, actual plan is to take place is gonna be for the following year, school year?
Yes, plans are put in place this spring.
And we will find out about those results that two years after?
One year after.
One year after. Okay.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
And I think as we share this with the different groups, particularly staff, we, we did choose to really focus a lot of time on getting more families to take the survey because you get, you get more buy-in about the results. When you know that more people are, are taking the survey and particularly with our elementary and middle, where we saw the participation rates jump. And we saw our Latinos who, who took the survey, that response rate also jumped, so it's more representative of our community. It just, it just gives that, the, the data a lot more backing when you're presenting it and saying, it is, this is what, this is what our families are saying, this is what our students are saying, so.
Yeah, I just was gonna echo, I feel like I've seen this survey, this is I think now my second year seeing this and and I saw it on school site council, I saw it last year around this time. And I keep hearing that we're gonna narrow the focus and I, and we're gonna create an action plan, and I'm just seeing like, what are the trends? Did we see these same trends last year and the year before? And do those action plans even matter? Because, and I, I just, yes, and I just want you to know, it's just like, yeah.
So particularly for you, Dana and Anne did the best job in Nevada when I was there, using this with the parents, so she's gonna be helping us use it. Like, it's, she's very familiar with the youth truth survey, which is good. So what I would say is each, I mean, there are general overall trends, but each school is really different.
Oh, I totally know.
So it's really sitting down with them to say, well, in my school, these are the three best things we're doing, so let's celebrate those things. And then one of those three things we really need to focus on, and that could be different, like with the staff, those concerns are gonna be a little different from maybe with the parents or with the students. So it really takes what our job with Tyler and Stephanie is to support the principal to make sense of a big thing. And really, again, help them pick a couple of areas where if they work on that, they're gonna get a big.
I just think we need to be a little transparent, because that's why we keep losing parents. Right, what, what is that action plan? Did we do the same action plan we did last year, we're doing it again this year, and did anything come out of that? I'm just being really honest.
I think for the district, we did, we did choose particularly with the community engagement section and Together 2024 to call out the, the engagement and communication for where that SMART goal, so that's what we were measuring and that's what Jim reported on earlier, where we saw increases. So we can look at those specific action items that we are using within Together 2024 to see if that, that alludes to that there's been some, of some success, because the communication and engagement results did go up this year. So that's a specific focus that the district looked at and the school might have something similar.
One of the things we're looking at is what if Tyler actually presented this, so what if, if relationships are kind of maybe the key thing, and if that's an area where there's some concern? Would it be helpful if the district, you know, pushed everybody to work on the relationships? Like, like making sure that at least, is it that, the relationship between the student and the, and the teacher and making sure that the student believe the teacher want the best for them and then da, 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 da. So that's something we're also thinking about, if that's something that across the board, I mean, but if, but if your relationship is defined, that they, we don't wanna maybe work on, that's not something you have to do.
But I, but I think, and Trustee Martin, I certainly don't wanna put words into your mouth, but it, it really, I think the most important thing from a parent perspective is understanding, I spent this time filling out the survey, we do it once a year, now what? And be really transparent about, this is how it's getting integrated into the site specific plan. These are how we're measuring it year on year and just over communicating about it almost, so that they can see that it's not. And, and hopefully that also helps with engagement, because parents will feel like that half hour they spend filling out these forms, there's actually something that's coming from it. So that, I, I, I just wanted to reinforce what I heard, Trustee Martin say.
Yeah, so I wanna pick up on that again, because I think it's important to make the point. So just on that, so right now we, we saw the results, I also one question, sorry Christina, can we have access to the whole thing? Can I go in and dive in myself and click and filter the data myself? So if you share that link with me or with anybody within the board, can I look at the same thing that you're looking at?
If superintendent Hogue and I would like us to share them, if you can, yes.
That's interesting, okay, um, so, um, so the, the, thank you for that. But the other thing is like, when we, when we heard about this last year, right? And I think that, you know, it's great that we have had continuity, so congratulations on that, because I think that's super important that we're continue using these tools. But what I, what, can we have like, okay, last year we saw some statistics, like it went up, it went down, but like all the things that we saw last year, we worked on these three things, right? And these are the results, and we didn't have time to work on these other three things, because, I mean, we're a little bit busy, right? So obviously, we're a little bit busy. But is there anything that we can do to kind of loop that back to the, to the survey that we did last year and say, Tyler and Stephanie worked specifically on these two issues? And we were not able to meet these goals, and we met these goals, because, you know, as, is there, number one, can we do that? So that the board has a little bit of like that feedback, so we can close that loop from last year, right? So I think it would be great. And the second question is, and again, I know Christina have a lot of communication and stuff on your plate, but I wonder if, if you, if you think it's a good idea, I don't know if you're doing this already, that by site or by school, you say, these are some of the highlights of it too. Thank you so much for completing the survey, thank you, and we know you spent half an hour of your time, we're really appreciative of this. And these are some of the highlights as a district that we saw. And then the principal can customize that email to parents, saying in our site, we observe two or three things here that we wanna call on your attention. Is that something that you have in the pipeline to do? I mean, I wonder, because that way we can then close that communication loop with the parents that spend some time doing that, and not only the parents, sorry. With the students as well, I think just, just as valuable as it is for the students.
Well, I was gonna add, we have our, our site committee meeting, our students.
The council on Wednesday.
Our points and our key takeaways from that would be something that I think parents would be interested in here.
Absolutely, so also, also not just the parents, but also what, what we heard from the students, what we hear from the staff. I mean, I will, as a parent, I will, I think I will love to hear all those things. So, I mean, it's an ask, I don't know if it's possible to do, I don't know what other school board members think about this, but I am picking up on all the things that our trustee said.
I'm so glad you did, because that's exactly what I meant to say, but for some reason, I just don't come across with what I wanna say so many times. I am so thankful that you're able to translate and read my mind.
No, Marina. I'm, they, you know what's nice?
It's only fair.
No, you know what's nice, and I'm the last one to talk, so all I do is feed it into what I have. No originality, no, I'm not original at all, I just feed it from the wonderful stuff.
I'm glad, because hopefully someone will pick up and understand what I'm trying to say and what we need and what parents do.
So. Yeah, it customizes a message, so you have it, it's like, oh, principal, these are the key messages, customize it for your site, customize it for your folks. And, and that way it's easier, and it's a bullet, it's a boilerplate situation.
Talk about your next school site council.
Exactly.
It was a bullet point.
Exactly, it was a loop, it was a loop. And like, we're grateful, because last year we did this, and unfortunately, there's a couple of things that we worked on, but you know, we are looking at this. I mean, even if it's just two or three major ideas, right? And I think that would be, that would be super, super helpful to our community, I, I, hopefully.
Thank you so much.
I forget if I asked for public comment on this, have I? I don't think I have, would anybody in the audience or online like to provide public comments about this item? If you're online, please use the raise hand function.
I just wanna follow up on what Trustee Palma was saying and that what, Trustee Martilda, is there, there is kind of a, a loop in terms of the principals are gonna review their current SIPSA's and they do an annual report on that. So, so I think in terms of the data, this is really like high level data. But if we look more at the specific actions that was connected to the goals that came from this data. For example, it might be increasing home visits, how did that improve a sense of connectedness and relationships? That's data that we do have numbers on. If it's increasing student participation in student leadership group, that is data that, that, you know, sites have information on. So I do see, it makes, it makes these numbers visible, this is what it actually looks like at our school. So I know when we're working with principals on the, on SIPSA's and supporting them, that's something that we can, we make sure that's included and that it's presented at their E-LAX and their, their site councils. Yes, yes.
Because otherwise, people just think it goes into the E-LAX.
And the data without story of what that's something behind it, like.
It needs to be tangible, it needs to be tangible. If I can make a, a suggestion, and I, I completely agree with everything, it's the sentence, I thought we are already on track to do this, we're, it would be great to have an update about this in our weekly board report, when these messages start getting sent out, when the site, site specific plans get put together, just so that we can continue to monitor this, because this is, the point was made earlier that we have a lot of quantitative data, all the testing, things like that. But this is really one of the only sources of qualitative data that we have. And so I, I think it's just important, the more that we know and can sort of track what is going on, I think the better. So it'd be great to have any updates about this included in our weekly board reports. And I'm sure Carolina and Marina will also be getting it as parents and parenting parents in the district as well, so. That's all I wanted to say, thank you so much, I know this is a lot of hard work, it's a lot of synthesizing of data. It's hugely complex, but I think seeing some of the trend lines and also understanding that what are the real touchpoints like, making sure we have parents filling out the survey at, at Davidson in particular, it's really critical. So now we know that, now we know that we need to improve there, and so hopefully next year we'll see improved engagement. Okay, let's move on to, does anyone need a five minute break, I should ask? We're almost, we're so close, this one's hard, okay, I'm just, I'm good to power through, but I wanted to ask, okay. Um, so next item is, yeah, thanks to us, is the acceptance of the Williams Quarterly Report for the Board, the period of January to March 2023. Is this you, Jim? Okay.
Okay, so if you recall, we had a visit from the state for the Williams back in October, and maybe recommendations in January, so these are, there's nothing new here. So just to recall, and basically they were focused on Centennial High School and Terre Linda High, those are the two. The January Quarter Report noted that Centennial and Terre Linda have lumbering met the standards and requirements could be assessed. As a result of Williams Settlement Annual Report, there were two requirements needed to follow up. So the first one's facilities and maintenance, and so last time I already reported that to you and we dealt with those. The second one has to do with current teacher misassignments and vacancies, so that's what I'm reporting up tonight. Okay, so for the October to December 2022 quarterly reporting period, the school facilities complaints were resolved. In addition, it was reported that two out of nine teacher misassignments were resolved within thirty calendar days. These resolved misassignments were from Terre Linda High School, so that left seven unresolved complaints from teacher misassignments and vacancies, which are all Amy Bear's fault. All right, I wanna make sure you get this, okay, so again, this is not a report of new complaints, it's a report on the seven unresolved complaints of Janu- in January. Lori Owens, by the way, is super, super helpful, she does all these compliance things and wrote this all up for me, because clearly I'm not up to speed on it. Okay, so based on the 2122 data, a total of nine complaints were reported, I told you two were resolved right off the bat. Terre Linda High School, four out of the five complaints were resolved. The first one was a misassignment of four courses due to biology G-Lab, which stands for General Education Limited Assignment Teaching. I'm sure Amy knows that. Added biological science to the multiple serving credential, so that was resolved, there's a pending resolution to correct a misassignment pending CTC approval. That's at Terre Linda, four out of five. It's there, it's Centennial High School, the two out of two complaints were resolved. A misassignment of two courses, two misassignments, no longer teaching these courses, so that's been resolved. So that's where we are, so my, I recommend a motion to accept the Williams Quarterly Report for the period of January to March 2023.
So moved. Moved by Trustee Jackson, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Martin, all those in favor of accepting the Williams Quarterly Report for the period of January to March 2023, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed? It passes unanimously.
Good deal on any of those credential issues.
Amy loves that.
Compliance.
Thank you, Amy. We are on to the consent agenda, does anyone have any items that they wish to pull at this time? Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
With approval of items one through four on the consent count.
Moved by Trustee Jackson, do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Palma, all those in favor of moving items one through four on the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed? We are now in adjournment and.